All right, we're going to go ahead and call to the order the regular session for the Willemar City Council meeting September 19th, 2018. Roll call please Debbie.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Nick.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Swanson.
Here.
Mayor Benoit.
Here. All right, we'll go and do the flag salute. Dan, would you give us a flag salute?
Okay, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a quick presentation this evening for the Constitution group. I'm always so excited when you guys come down here to do this, so please come on over here.
Well, we're excited for what you're doing.
Well, thank you for coming. So, I'll read the proclamation here. This is, "Whereas it is a privilege and a duty of the American people to commemorate the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America and the guardian of our liberties embodies the principle of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule and law, by and whereas on September 17, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution by the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord the official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations at which we commemorate it." So, at this day, we've recognized you guys, and with a few more whereas', I'll leave them for you guys, and thank you for coming down here. You guys have a few words you'd like to say?
Mayor, members of the council, oops, don't want to bump that over, citizens of Willemar. On behalf of the daughters of the American Revolution and the Luceno Chapter, I would like to thank you for recognizing this event. The Constitution is the very foundation of our government and the basis of our rights and freedoms. The U.S. Constitution has only 4,400 words. It is the oldest and shortest written Constitution of any major government in the world. Constitution Week honors our ancestors and the framework of government that they have given us. It is our hope that all citizens take this opportunity to appreciate and review the gift our founding fathers have given us. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Can we get a photo up here? One more time, just two things. Thank you. 200 and some years she goes. That one's bigger than ours. All right, with that, we'll go and get into public comments. First up, Kenny. While we're waiting for the turn, this is the time for public comment. We've got a few public comment cards, but if anyone else has a public comment framed on the agenda, you go ahead and fill this out and put it in the basket up there.
Hello? No?
Well, we can move the other microphone over there.
There it is.
There we go.
Okay.
Oh, hold on. Sorry, Kenny, before you do that, I've got a warning I have to read. I misplaced it. Debbie, do you have that? Yeah, thank you. So, we need to let everybody know tonight, we're actually testing a new system for a video, for a video system, which can be used for live streaming on a city website, and so although there will be no live streaming tonight, the meeting is being recorded, so we wanted to just let you know there's a video recording now, and so if you're on the video recording, we need to let you know that, and there you go, you've been notified. So, there we go.
All right.
Thank you, Kenny.
Why am I not surprised that there is no live streaming this evening? Once again, we've been lied to, and where's our Facebook page? The city continues to do business with a local nonprofit, Willemar Little League, an organization that has failed to respond to letters received by them from the Attorney General's Office Registry of Charitable Trust, letters which this council has seen. Because of that failure, they are or are about to be suspended, and as such, they are prohibited by law from engaging in conduct for which registration is required, including soliciting or dispersing charitable funds. They are also no longer permitted to conduct business in the state of California until the suspended status is rectified. The city spends tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money annually watering, maintaining a facility, emptying the trash of Wells Field for the exclusive use of this organization. This has got to stop until such time as this organization gets current on their required registration with the Registry of Charitable Trust. Also on the list of delinquent, not registered organizations are the Willemar VFW, the Willemar Elk's Lodge, Caring Hearts for Veterans and Community, the Historical Society and the Community Council. The list goes on and on. If city officials continue to spend taxpayer funds to support this now illegally operated organization, Willemar Little League, I will ask the Attorney General's Office, any group of 19, to look into the legality of this action on a part of the city. The city has got to stop operating, or start operating like a real city, and not like somebody's personal toy, where y'all get to do whatever it is you want without regard to the rule of law. As taxpayer funds are used to maintain Wells Field, these bulk fields should also be open to the general public for use during daylight hours.
Next up, I have Gail Taylor.
I would like to know how the repeal of the gas tax will affect the widening of Bundy Canyon when you go into that discussion, and that's all I have to say.
Very good. Patrick Ellis.
Good evening, Mayor Benoit, council members, staff. Patrick Ellis, President and CEO of the Marietta-Wildemar Chamber of Commerce. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. I just wanted to announce and let everybody know that's here in attendance and here on the dais that we will be hosting in conjunction with the Southwest Riverside Association of Realtors, the candidate's forum for the city council rates for the city of Willemar. So, it will take place on Tuesday, October 9th at 6:00 p.m. right here in this chambers. I will be renting this remote to do so. Myself and Gene Wonderleg, who is the Government Affairs official with SRCR, will be the moderator. Well, he'll be the moderator, I'm just the guy holding the thing that says you've got 30 and 60 seconds left. So, encourage everyone to come out that night. We'll do our best also to videotape that and then get that up online so as many people can see that as possible. I do have a few flyers, if anyone would like one, just come over and grab one from me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, and I have Ashley Kessler. Did I get that close, Ashley?
Yeah. I just, I bought my home recently, within the last year here. I'm from the area locally. I've never lived in a city that looks like this, so my concerns are, I want to know where our tax dollars are going, I want to know who I need to talk to to cut up a tree by my house that I worry my child is going to get dragged into by some transient and harmed on her way home from school. If somebody doesn't do it, I'm going to take my husband's chainsaw and do it myself. I want to know why the parts aren't cleaned up, why they're not maintained properly, and why nobody goes around picking up the trash and the city looks like a dump. That's it.
Thank you, Ashley. I'll reach out to you myself. Thank you. All right, anyone else for public comment? Is that a public comment card?
Yes.
What's your name?
Rick Harris.
Rick, come on down.
So, I'm Rick Harris. I live at 22860 Valley Vista Circle. So, I have a couple of comments on the Bundy Canyon Road widening project. I live in the Van Dale Track that exits Oak Canyon. Just wonder if there's going to be a signal light from our track to leave, to turn left, or how the road's going to go. And then the other problem I have is whoever hired the company that's contacting us on taking our property intimate domain, is very rude. So, I don't know if you hired them or somebody else, but I will not talk to them anymore. So, that's all I have to say. You need to find somebody that's...
So, that's on actually on item 3.1, so go ahead and hang out until 3.1.
Whoever's a professional at that, you need to hire somebody. Because they're not good people at all.
Sorry to hear that. All right, with that, we will go into the consent calendar. And May, is I have you down for 1.6 and 1.7? Come on down.
Okay. The Little Free Library is a nonprofit organization. They have nothing to do with this project. This is an Eagle Scout project. When the city accepts the donation, the box will become part of park-owned equipment, and the city will be responsible for maintaining, repair, graffiti removal, theft, and other damage that may occur. Nowhere is there a provision stating who will be the steward or caretaker responsible for supplying the books when this scout is no longer involved. Will the box simply sit empty, or does the city have a plan? It will, after all, be our property. We do not need another failed swing that resulted in the loss of an ADA ramp at Marnell O'Brien Park in the totlet, or shade structures over the dugouts at Marnell O'Brien that provide no shade, recycling bins at Marnell O'Brien, who collects those items anyway. Drinking fountains that cost $850 to repair a couple of months after it was installed, bulletin boards one place in front of a sprinkler making it unusable, and the other one place where almost no one travels to read it, next to a rarely-used dog park. 1.7, WQMP. This city cannot even maintain the existing WQMP that came with Marnell O'Brien Park in perpetuity. The drains are never cleaned out as required by that WQMP, the filters have never been replaced, the parking lot drains are inoperable, the bioswale is a joke. Why does anyone think this new plan will work any better? Have any of you even read it? Table 2.1, Summary of Approval, 2010, 303D, Listed Water Bodies and Associated Pollutants of Concern for Riverside County, SMR Region and Downstream Water Bodies, does not include Lake Elsinore, where 1/3 of Willemar stormwater flows into. Just because we chose to be covered by one agency, San Diego Regional Water Board, does not mean that we can ignore the water body and what flows into it.
Thank you. Thank you, and I apologize, we skipped ahead a second there. We'll go back to council communications real quick. Bridget?
So, last week, we attended the League of California Cities event, and all five of us were able to go, which is the first time in 10 years we're able to do that. These events are very educational, the daytime, we go to different breakout sessions, and we purposely broke up to attend different sessions, but it's nice to just also get to meet the other council members and the other city staff and hear what other cities are doing with their issues, which a lot of them, we have a lot of same issues, but how they're handling it, how they're dealing with it, so it's really good, so good time.
Obviously, Bridget hit the nail on the head with that, so I did that too, and then that's it.
Well, the one thing that Bridget didn't mention was all the vendors. Everybody that could supply anything in this city was there. I can't believe how many. We got to walk around and meet them, and some of them had services we could use, some of them had services we probably will never use, but it was still interesting to learn and to meet some of those people.
Ken?
Yep, it was good.
Well, we also had a couple other events in town. We had the ribbon cutting for the bike trail, which we had a really great bike ride. Bridget and I did half the trail, and I did the other half. Bridget had another event to go to. And then we also had a movie in the park that was a little bit off the hook. We had probably, did staff have a number or a head count? 650? That's a pretty good average. I'd agree with that number, so it was a really nice concert, or supposed to be a concert in the park following movie in the park. Unfortunately, the Mariachi Band failed to deliver, so we short the band, but anyhow.
It had music.
They had music, yeah.
It had Mariachi music, so that was good.
Yep, and I think there was a couple other events, but those are the big ones.
The bank, we had the bank, and the mayor, they're copying the mayor.
Oh, yeah, the copy of the mayor. And then there's a ribbon cutting for the new bank, the Pacific Marine Credit Union. Have you gotten an email to tell us what the new name is?
So, I got an email today saying the name is changing.
Okay.
And nowhere in the email does it say what the name will be, so...
They're still just typing it up.
But it's typed, yeah.
So, Pacific Marine Credit Union just moved into town, they put just the sign on the front of the building. If you go inside the bank, you notice there's no other name anywhere, because they're about to change their name, so I'm all guessing that it has something to do with not being quite so framed just for Marines.
Because anyone can join.
Anyone can join, so it's great bank, and if you walk in, it's a very nice, open environment, as opposed to, it feels like you're walking into a coffee shop.
Yes.
Really nice, so we're really happy to get them into our city and happy to have them there. All right, with that, I will look for an approval of the agendas presented.
So moved.
Yes, Dan?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, for item 1.8, let me...
I wasn't there yet. I just got to get the agenda approved first.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, under the consent calendar, Dan, you have something you want to say about item 1.8?
Yes, please. Item 1.8, I just wanted to add, in the staff report for the record, in the first paragraph, that the actions that the city staff took was in accordance with the Willemar Municipal Code Section 3.28.040. And that complete the...
Okay, and then...
Move approval.
Staff have any responses for the items that came up with the, that Kenny brought up?
So, item 1.7 is the Water Quality Management Plan. The plan, I think it is spelled out as far as reasons why we're doing that. The concern that was raised by Mr. May, staff has been working on that, they are old filters. Staff has been trying to identify a replacement filter. They've actually even been working with the regional board, as a resident did file a complaint with the regional board that the filters hadn't been maintained. So, we've been in constant contact with them, we're working on it, our engineering staff is working with our maintenance staff to find a suitable replacement.
Very good. And then on the Little Free Library, my understanding is the same way that's been doing the other libraries, we provide the books for that area, is that correct, or...
Yes, and also the community. The whole concept of the Little Free Library is you take one and bring one, so it should self-fund itself, but there's plenty of residents that have already offered to do that, and it will be registered with the National Little Free Library, so it is related to that.
And I promise, if there's no books in there, I will buy books myself and put them in there.
Yeah, there'll be books.
It's on, it's being recorded. I'll buy them.
And I'll let him buy them.
Yep, we're good.
All right.
Pretty boxing.
Gary, you're being motioned to for some reason. Can we go on? Okay, good. All right, any other questions on the consent calendar? Now, I'll look for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries with all ayes. Onto item 3.1, Bundy Canyon Road Widening. Dan, do you hear some earlier comments? If you could address those what you had during your presentation, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you. If you just give me just a second, let me scroll back to, item 3.1 is on page 880 of your staff report. Let me get there real quickly. The purpose tonight, and I will answer a couple of questions that were raised earlier with this presentation. First thing I wanted to highlight is, you know, the city staff has been working diligently to deliver a project. The schedule that we have set to our consultant team is to be ready to deliver a project for construction in the fall of 2019. I'm going to talk about that in a bit. At current, and these estimates are based on 95% plans, and we've, earlier tonight, on the consent calendar, approved three amendments to the various consultant teams that we have working on this project. From 95% to 100%, seems like it should be an easy jump for 5%, but it's not, and that's where the real heavy lift is. We are reaching out to the various neighbors. I understand that we have a complaint from Mr. Harris on CPSI. I will follow up with that personally and find out what the root of that is. But in any event, as we go through acquisition, as we go through the final fine-tunings of the plans, we find other things that have to be added to the plans to address concerns and comments from the residents. So, we're at that phase, we're probably about 98%. We're still on track to be able to deliver our project. The estimate at this time is about $40 million, that's from start to finish. We've identified about $30 million, which is a big lift. And I guess the question many would say is, well gee, why didn't Tumpf pick up its fair share? One thing that is good to remember is, back when this project first started under the county, it was going to be Bundy Scott, and the project was going to go from I-15 to I-215, and that was done under the county. We incorporated, Menifee later incorporated, and they had to split the funds up. And when they split the funds up, they used linear footage as opposed to the level of improvement that's required. The Willemar piece is much more challenging than the Menifee piece. We have horizontal curves and vertical curves, and we have a lot of environmental constraints, and a variety of homes that had to be mitigated for as far as sound and the like. So, the cost for our piece is quite a bit higher than the cost for the Menifee piece, and so we're, you know, that's how it just, it cut the way it cut. That being said, we've been aggressive. We've applied for a lot of grants, we've worked with a lot of our regional agencies, and what the staff report points out, and I don't want to go through all in agnostium, but we have got some great regional partners through Western Riverside Council of Governments, Riverside County Transportation Commission, SCAG, the County of Riverside, and County of Riverside Flood Control District. They have all been a partner in this, and they've all provided some level of assistance to get us to the finish line. As far as the shortfalls, we have got three options, and this is one that I think if council wanted to deliberate or give just some discussion, staff could take notes. First option is, we stay on track and we identify local funds to get that $10 million shortfall. Question of SB 1. SB 1 has got many pots of money. One pot of money is non-competitive, and that's primarily for pavement repair. We received those funds '17, '18, '19, and we spent them, we've already spent them. You've seen those improvements on Bundy Canyon, where we fixed the pavement on Bundy Canyon, Clinton Keith Road at Palomar, Inland Valley in front of the hospital. Those have been some really good improvements, and then also on Grand Avenue, we did a section. The other parts are competitive, and that means that we compete at the statewide level. We applied for the first cycle for the SB 1 Local Programs, Projects Programs, and we applied for $9.3 million, and we were not the top winner, we weren't awarded funds for that. There's another program that's available, it's the congested corridor program that we think our project qualifies for. That call for projects will be in 2020. So, the answer is, we still have an opportunity through RCTC's allocation of discretionary funds and another round of competitive grants for the local programs piece under SB 1. If SB 1 does not come through, that eliminates that opportunity to fill that $10 million shortfall that we currently have. So, the only other way to be able to make the fall project is we have to identify other local funds. There's very few grants that will come up and will be awarded in time in the next six months for us to be able to do that. Option 2. Option 2 is, you know, we continue to track these SB 1 grants and other grants that'll come up in the next 18 to 24 months, and that could delay the project potentially two years for construction. And then option 3 is, we could federalize the project. At the time that the project was first done, it was done under the SEQA process because it was all going to be done under the county and it was going to be covered by local funds. There was enough funds to be able to build from '15 to '21, and I explained to you how it got cut. So, RCTC has got a bigger pot of funds available to the city if we federalized the project. So, what does that mean? Federalizing the project means that we would probably spend about half a million dollars, quarter of a million to half a million, on the conservative side, a half a million dollars if we redid all of our technical studies to qualify under a NEPA provision. That'd take us 18 to 24 months. What that then does do is, it opens us up for other federal funds, but then it won't be the 10 million shortage, it'll be more, because it's anywhere from 10 to 25% more to deliver a federal project through administration and the like. So, I think we have three options. One is we continue the course, we identify another opportunity for local funds, there could be other opportunities, right? And we could talk about it as your questions arise. SB 1, if that continues, we will, we can chase that over the next two years, and then the third option that we had discussed. So, that kind of summarizes the overview of the project. I want to talk about the question on, will there be a signal coming out of the track on Valley Vista? So, this is the same question that Rick had asked at our last open house, we told him that we would look into it. I think the staff report addressed that. We are looking at two options right now at 95%. A traffic signal would be about 200, 250,000 bucks at that location to put it in. We've not turned our design team loose on that design yet, because we're looking at the second option that we're still costing out, and that is to take a one-way south from Valley Vista to Monta Vista at Canyon, will ultimately be a signalized intersection. So, if you recall, we worked with flood control to acquire that 20-acre parcel for a big detention basin for the Line C, which has got significant value for our region, but it also is impacted by Bundy Canyon. So, we've worked with flood control, we have a conceptual design that would provide for an access out, and that would provide a nice option for the residents. So, option 1, we're looking at traffic signal, that's an option. Option 2, we're looking at a connection that would provide folks to come out to a signalized intersection ultimately at Monta Vista. And then the third option is, is we do no change, they would basically have to do right-in, right-out out of their subdivision, and they would have to go up 3/4 of a mile to Oak Circle and do a U-turn if they wanted to go west. There is a apartment complex that's right adjacent to them that has also agreed to put in a traffic signal, and that's like about less than a quarter of a mile. So, we're going to look at all three options, we haven't settled on that yet, and I have no more to report on that inquiry. And that completes my presentation, open up to council questions and discussion.
Counsel?
So, those are the, so basically the options are, to try to just find more money that's not going to cost us anything, but that's not going to put us in the hole or whatnot. That's all I have for now, I'm just doing that, and we will...
So, Dan, on the SB 1 money that we went after this last cycle, where were we in the standings between us and getting money out of that cycle?
Yeah, our region did not fare well, unfortunately, at the statewide level. We did also, all of us did rally behind Lake Elsinore. Railroad Canyon definitely had a big push, we needed to deliver that project that has ramifications on Willemar, so we did support that. RCTC, when they were ranking out the projects as far as immediate need... RCTC, when they were ranking out the projects as far as immediate needs, they found that they ranked higher for Bundy Canyon, I mean for Railroad Canyon. They asked us staff to support that. They understood that we still need our funding, but we're still, we were still out two years. They've committed that they would continue to help us find funds. So as you know how those inner workings with our regional partners work.
Were there any other projects between us and Railroad Canyon then?
Not, not in this section of Riverside. I think Lamonite might have gotten a piece. There might have been something up along the pass with Cahalko, and I can't recall exactly, but.
No, as far as if we were to go for money again next cycle, it sounds like we're next in line.
Well, I think, you know what? From a cost benefit and an accident history, our project did very well. If we go after a grant again here in the next year, I'll probably reach out and hire somebody who's specific to grant proposals. They're very specific. This was a very complicated cycle. Initially, it seemed simple, and we were working with our inner west staff. They did a good job. But I think when you're in a competitive nature at the state level, you have to show some other things. Now, we also don't do well because we're not a disadvantaged community, right? So a lot of points go there, and a lot of projects landed in those areas where they had those other kinds of needs. So we're always going to be bucking up against that when we chase for grant money.
Back to the Valley, or back to the neighborhood concern there, connecting Valley Vista to Montevista, what would the timeline of that look like? Are we talking same time as we're building this? Would that be a future project?
Yeah, so I've met two times with Riverside County Flood Control. They're in their environmental document for the basin. They're preliminary engineering. We asked them to include the road in with their environmental impact report. Their EIR should be done at the same time that we're ready to actually go so that we could actually build that road under something that has been done and studied environmentally. Our project didn't study that, so we would need them to study that. So if anything, it would only be delayed by the time for them to finish their studies and then us to be able to build that piece. Our team has not, we've not done an amendment to their contract to do detailed engineering. We've only done an amendment to their contract to work horizontal and vertical grade and work in coordination with Flood Control. Those will be firmed up over the next three months.
Got it down here. All right. Any other questions? Who else is here for Bundy Canyon? I see a lot of phases out there. Yep, I figured. We're working on it. We need to do it faster, we know. But you know, it's a matter of cobbling together the money now that we have the plans done. And as you've heard, we're about 10 million short. There's, there's funds out there, especially with SB1. They go away. It's going to take a little longer. It's just the nature of the beast, but we're going to continue to fight for those monies. Dan mentioned WRCOG. He mentioned that they sort of went back and forth on linear foot, but I'll, I'll throw them a little bone that we went back and asked them for a lot of other ways to get money out of that project. And I think we asked for about five or six different ways to get money out, to change the formulas here and there, and we got all those. So we got as much as we could out of WRCOG. We've gotten a little bit out of RCTC, and I think there's opportunities to go back and get more. If we can close this gap down to the $2 to $3 million number, I think there's definitely some local pots of money we could go after either county level or some other level. So we'll keep banging away on it. It's, it's getting close. AQMD money for a paved road? Yeah, I don't think so. You know, they're, they're usually trying to get you to take cars off the road.
Yeah, the only way on AQMD, right? So I'm also the chair of the MSRC TAC. We'll be meeting with the MSRC and AQMD here this next month, and we'll be looking at our next two-year plan. So the last two-year work plan at the AQMD level, they did, there was a lot of discussion about supporting active transportation. And so one of the strategies that we did early on is we reconfigured Bundy Canyon so that we had an active transportation corridor along the northern side. And so we've applied for an ATP grant for about $4.1 million. Depending on how this work plan goes and how they choose to formulate that, there could be some funds available under the local program match. In prior years, for example, on Grand Avenue, we did a similar project. We got a half a million dollars from AQMD. Last year, we only got 50 because the way they cut out the work program was they only wanted to match on what we would get for AB2766 piece. And so the best we got was 50,000. We're applying that to Clint Keith Road. So in hopes, Mr. Chairman, when we go back through the work program in October, we'll continue to fight for active transportation and not have a dollar limit like we did on the last two-year work plan.
So I'll translate. There's a portion of Bundy Canyon project that is a bike path, and that's in that $40 million. We could get that piece of money from AQMD through the MSRC. So that's where, where Dan is the TAC chair, and I'm just a board member there on that, on that subcommittee. But yeah, we'll definitely look at there too. All right. Does this item need a?
To receive and file.
Just receive and file. Okay. We'll go on to item 3.2, the Community Development Block Grant Briefing and Update. Who's on this one?
I am.
All right. Go ahead, Matt. Thank you. Mayor, members of council. As soon as the PowerPoint comes up, I will go through the presentation. Okay, I'm just going to go ahead and give a verbal report, and we'll see what happens. So as part of the fiscal year 2019, 2020 CDBG program, this is about the time of the year that we start collecting applications for our projects for the funding from HUD. We received the Notice of Funding Availability, otherwise known as NOFA, from the County EDA, Economic Development Agency, back in August. Shortly after receiving that notice from EDA, they notified the city manager and staff that they wanted to give the city the full fiscal year 1920 CDBG funds, which was about $125,000 now, instead of waiting to July 2019 when we normally would get it because of that fiscal year. This advancement of the future funds would be applied immediately to the Setco Sidewalk Construction Project, which should be starting pretty soon, so the city could finish a phase one part of that by April of 2019. They were very adamant about doing that. They wanted to see that project done, that first phase, have something physical out there. As you know, we got the Malaga Park done. We had, that was funded through CDBG. So they really want to see some improvement. So unfortunately, the caveat to doing that is that the city could not use any of those 125K funds for funding the nonprofit groups. Typically, it's 14% of that amount, which comes out to around $17,500. So that was the EDA's caveat to us. So as, as part of figuring this out, council staff decided to, and it's in the staff report, give the council an option that where they could fund that $17,500 to our CDBG nonprofit groups via one-time general fund allocation from our reserves as part of the fiscal year 2019-20 budget cycle, which will begin in the fourth quarter of this current fiscal year. Procedurally, staff would open a 30-day application process, similar to what we do for CDBG, which would be around March, and where each nonprofit could submit an application similar to the CDBG process. Those applications would be evaluated by staff like we normally do, and then we would present that to the council as part of their budget program under the decision packages. So not being part of the official CDBG program, you know, the application form will be similar to what it was, but it won't say Community Development Block grant. This is just going to be a one-time opportunity that council could decide to do. Then fiscal year 2020, 2021, we would go back to our current cycle of CDBG funding for capital projects as well as nonprofits at that time. So that's kind of where we are on that update. This year also is the beginning of the five-year, what the HUD calls a consolidated plan process. It's a five-year strategic plan that HUD requires every city in the country to do, every county receiving CDBG funds. So EDA has been asked to do that. As a cooperating city under our CDBG program, EDA is asking us to take part in that as well. So the purpose of the city's involvement will be to assess our own local community needs, whether it be affordable housing, social services, economic development, community facilities, and the like. And this will help EDA identify available resources in the future and help establish priorities and projects and activities using HUD funding moving forward over the next five years. EDA has told the city that the process is primarily accomplished through a resident needs assessment survey and holding public meetings like we are tonight, so folks can provide council verbal feedback on the CDBG program and what they feel some of the needs are. As you might have received, we did send an email blast out this morning that basically describes everything that I'm just talking about. We have a link, a banner on our main webpage. If you click on that link, it'll take you to the EDA's website. And if I had a, the PowerPoint, I could show you what that looks like, but you just put in your name and your zip code, email address and zip code, and based on the zip code, the county knows where the survey is coming from. So that's all electronically done with the county. They'll tabulate all of that. The other thing we did is we have copies, hard copies of the survey. We, I just placed a bunch at the back table here. We have some, a bunch, some bunch. We have them at the library as well as City Hall main lobby. And if anyone wants a hard copy, I can just email it to them as well. Those can be filled out, turned back to the planning department, and then we would take those hard copies and forward them to, to EDA as part of this process. So what the email blast said this morning is that we're going to have a approximate 30-day window to, for our residents to go online and fill out this resident needs assessment survey. It'll run basically from tomorrow through October 22nd. And then, as I mentioned, we have the link to the website. Oh hey, there we go. There's the county webpage. Thank you, Tina. So if you click on the link that's on our main webpage, it's at, just below all the banner stuff, it'll take you to this page where you can put in your email address and your zip code, and then it goes through a survey, unfortunately of 42 different questions. Most of it's kind of checkboxes. Some of it's typed out, like written verbal things. But nonetheless, it's to help the county and HUD determine what the local needs are. So it's part of that consolidated plan process. Go ahead and move to the next one, Tina, please. Okay, I, so I just mentioned the paper copies. So part of the consolidated plan process as well is to get community involvement at the meetings with the city council. So tonight serves as one opportunity. I'm sure there'll be, I know there's some speakers here that want to talk about CDBG in general. They also may want to mention what some, they feel some of the needs are. So we've also scheduled the October 10th council meeting. I'll give you another briefing update. Hopefully, we'll be able to provide, you know, the council with the number of how many surveys have been filled out electronically, how many I've had, and then we'll have another opportunity, just like this, under general business for the community to come up and to kind of express their ideas. And then the final council meeting will be held on November 14th. That meeting will be where we'll present an entire summary of the whole consolidated plan process and surveys received. What we're doing and what we planned out and mapped out, EDA has supported, kind of given us the check saying, that's fine with us, that'll work perfect. And they were very, actually very helpful with Tina getting the link on the webpage and all that, so that was really good. So once we conclude that process on the 14th, all the surveys and all the information we get, we'll have to have the minutes from the meetings, any public speaker cards, so on and so forth. We have to send that to EDA by the December 14th deadline. The reason it's December 14th is the consolidated plan process, every city in the state, every city in the county, cooperating city is doing this as well. So they extended them. Usually by the end of October, all those CDBG applications, all that stuff is in. So that's why they extended it, because of the involvement in the process that they want. So that concludes my briefing, and I'm happy to answer any questions council has. Very good. There was a couple of public comments. Wouldn't take this first, if that's okay, Tina? Item, Kristen Lloyd.
All right. Thank you. I just want to point out the assessment. Everyone in the audience, really easy to do. They don't have, there's an option at the very bottom for things that they missed. And I will tell you, food, providing food, substance, substance for people. If you could write that in, I would appreciate it. I'm Kristen Lloyd. Everyone knows me usually. I am speaking tonight on behalf of myself and HOPE. I write their CDBG grants, and I want to thank staff for coming up with an option to think about those that HOPE's work, HOPE, HOPE's works with, within the community. Last year was the first year that I wrote the grants for them, and we were kind of going off of what they had previous years. And this year, I met, and you know, the whole new organization has taken over by the Dream Center, and they hadn't had good records. So last year, we were pretty conservative with numbers, and we had about, we put 250 unduplicated people for the city of Wildamar, and that's about a third of the overall. We, we set 750 for the entire organization with 500 going to Lake Elsinore. So 250 is what we had last year. I'm looking at the new numbers. I sat down with Brett, and this year, we're going to actually probably serve up to 2,000 unduplicated. So our numbers have really gone up, and that could be because of need as well as we're now doing real documentation. So there is a great need. HOPE provides 12 days of food, the CDBG grant that we write, 12 days of food, which is 36 meals. So the other, rest of the time, they're working on their own, and it's about 15% of Wildamar's residents that are sometimes in need on a monthly basis or just a one-time use of a job for a couple months, something. I just want to say that there's a great need. The monthly fees for the cost is about four grand, and that includes everything they need to, gas, for gas to go pick up items, rent, I'm trying to think what else was on there, electricity, and all of their volunteers are not paid. They're, we use those hours, but without our volunteers, we would be nowhere. And without funding, we would be nowhere. We wouldn't be able to open our doors and keep them open. So thank you. And if you want to ask me questions about HOPE, I think I can answer them.
Thanks, Tina. So how does this work with Grace Point and with Lakeview? Or is that 2,000 unduplicated going through them?
Those are separate. Those are the fresh food, and that's a totally separate item. They can also, those 50, or usually about 50 individuals that go to either Grace Point or.
Lakeview.
Yeah, Grace Point. They, and then there's a couple other people over, or other organizations on the other side of the lake that also provide those. And I don't know if you've been there, but fresh food is really not fresh food. Fresh food is things that the stores are getting rid of, out of date, and they have to be utilized usually within the next one to two days. So what HOPE provides is sustainable items that can be put on a shelf for more than a week or a couple weeks.
So they're doing like the dry, I've been there many times. I've volunteered at Grace Point several times. But, so you're saying HOPE is the dry food, cereal cans, because I know HOPE is the fresh, it's meat, sometimes dairy, eggs, vegetables, fruit.
Yeah. It just depends.
But back to the 2,000, so are the 50 or so, you're saying they're going to the church? Are they also going?
They could be, but they're in a different, just because we're providing fresh food, they still can qualify for 12 days of food throughout the month.
And then is Pastor Rick Davis still involved in HOPE?
Yes, yes.
Is he co? Co-president or co-director?
Yes, he's still co-director. And I know they're looking forward to opening up something in the next year or so.
So if we, if Wildamar couldn't do it this year, how much will her HOPE?
Well, last year, you gave 9,000, and it's, that's one and a half, or almost two months of what it would cost. No, no, it's still at the Mentorn location, and they pay about $2,800 for that location.
Wow.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Any other questions? Thank you. Kenneth Mays.
The claim is by keeping all the money, you'll have enough funding to complete the construction of Phase One of the sidewalk project between Excalibur Liquor and Alberta Road and a weekend flea market at Olive Street. We've heard that nonsense before. When the city engineer's estimate from Malaga Park came in at 161,520, this council approved spending 259,323 just for construction and 10% contingency, with the funding, design, environmental processing, right-of-way contract administration, construction administration, and inspection to be paid from the park's DIP fund. Hell, but that wasn't enough. You then needed an additional $30,000, bringing the total to 289,323, plus all of those other costs out of the park's DIP fund. The city set aside in fiscal year 2017, $110,000 for funding a fire hydrant project that'll decrease the risk of life due to fire and increase the fire protection system currently in place in that target area. What happened to that money? Spent it on Malaga, maybe?
Staff, you want me to come?
Sure, we weren't happy to. You know, back when we were identifying various opportunities to use some of these funds, fire hydrant study was one that we were looking into for Sedco. We worked with EVMWD, I think it was, gosh, a year and a half or so ago. They did a study. We were trying to identify if we had deficient fire hydrant locations, if we needed to bring in new ones, or if we just needed to retrofit. Their study came down pretty good. Those funds were reallocated, and they're moved over towards what created this project that we're talking about today. We had also some funds designated for Willamard Road. At the time, we were working with some of the residents along there. So through CDBG, it has been a process for us. I think we're on the right track with the right team, the consulting team on this project. But those funds that have been earmarked in prior years have been rolled up, and they're focused on this project, Phase One of Mission Trail Sidewalks.
All right. Any other council questions? So this is just receiving file again. We're going to make the decision on actually spending that money at a different time here?
It would be during the same time, it'd be during the same traditional time period.
With the budget?
With the budget process.
And so staff report did say we contacted, we contacted Hope, the Assistance League, Habitat, our normal people that are playing?
It would change, right?
Didn't get in touch with Habitat, but Dan and I met with them separately, but I did talk to the Assistance League as well as Kristen's group Hope. Just let them know this is what we were thinking about doing, and then explain why there weren't going to be the, or the public service funds for this next fiscal year.
We'd have the same type of criteria for the organizations that would be applying, as if they were applying for a CDBG program. So when it comes through during the budget process, under decision pack and format, they still have the same criteria as if it was under the CDBG program.
And will still be the same funding amount? There's always kind of restriction, having so much money?
Yes, because if we, and it would be recommended that it become from general fund reserves, this one-time allocation, and then when it reverts back the following year, the future, the next year, it would be a CDBG program. If we allocated out more monies than what came from CDBG in the following year, they have to take a reduction. So why is that good practice?
Well, I understood it in order to get this thing done, the project on...
Mission?
Mission Trail, that the CBGG funds, there was a shortfall if we didn't do that, and they wanted it all done at one time. That's why they allocated in the first place. So I'm under the impression is either I'm going to spend my money out of my general fund to finish the project, which they wouldn't let us do. So we just take and give the 17,000, whatever it is, out of the CBG and leave it there to get the project done, which gave us a short, either way, we were going to get this project done. We're just coming up with the same amount of money we were already going to spend, we're just going to allocate it to the people that need it.
Yeah.
So we don't want a shortfall to people that are in need. That's the whole idea here. And I understood that was the easiest way to, that's the easiest way to understand this. If we didn't do it, we didn't take all the money at one time, they wouldn't let us do the sidewalk and finish that project. So, right? Okay? I like it. Okay.
All right. This is also just receiving file. We're going to move on to the next item. 3.3, amending of the chapter of 8.84, the Willamard Municipal Code related to mobile food facilities. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance real quick. The ordinance is number 158, and ordinance of the city council of the City of Willamard, California, amending chapter 8.84 with the Willamard Municipal Code related to mobile food facilities.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The ordinance before you regulates mobile food facilities. It will allow those mobile food facilities on public and private property, provided that the applicant obtains a city business registration and a city mobile vending permit and a Riverside County Department of Environmental Health permit. Those permits, the mobile vending permit and the county health permit will be good for one year. They have to be renewed every year, and once issued, the mobile facility will be allowed to bend throughout the city. The purpose of the ordinance is to provide some level of regulation on mobile food facilities to protect public health and safety and also to accommodate these specific commercial uses within the city. And that concludes the staff presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. First off, I think the public comment. Kenneth Mays.
I'm glad to see this ordinance finally coming to be. Is there no way to allow these trucks to operate in the commercial districts after 10 o'clock, like until 2 o'clock in the morning? Why does everything in this town have to close up at 10 o'clock? And I would encourage the city council to Badger, Marietta, and Temecula to pass the same kind of ordinance, so these food trucks can operate throughout this valley. It would be a booming industry.
All right, Council.
So moved.
Oh, okay. Oh, no. I have some comments. First off, the first question that came up, 10 o'clock, is that the timeline for, for commercial?
Yeah.
There's exceptions for special events, all that kind of stuff.
Exception for special event. Generally speaking, though, the ordinance does say that mobile food facilities will operate between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. That's within your discretion if you would like to change that, but that's, that's what's contained in the ordinance currently.
But there is a way to do it with a special event. Okay. If you hear someone that needs it longer than 10 on a regular basis, let me know. I'll talk about changing that. So I just had a comment, the Press Enterprise ran an article on this, something about the, and the title was, what was it, Gary, you know, food trucks? Yeah, it made it sound like that we were...
Anti-food truck?
Anti-food truck. Just so everyone's clear, what's going on is the food truck ordinance as it stood would only allow it if it was pre-prepared food. This allows it where they can actually prepare the food on the truck, which makes way more sense because food truck food, the whole idea is it's prepared on the truck. So the only, the people that could vend out of a food truck are people like Taco Bell that would prepare their stuff at the place and then vend it out of the truck. Anyhow, this solves that problem. I guess my only concern is, the other part that the article touched on is you have to get, they called it a second permit. You know, to me, the business registration should just include the information needed for a food truck vendor, and that should be all they need, since it's the same one-year period. It's almost like, do we really need a second form? Couldn't we just execute that, you know, as part of the business license when we're collecting information? If it's a food truck, we also collect a little more information. All you need is the business license?
We could make a part of that process.
That's one less permit that they have to have. If they're registered business, you know, if they're registered with a business registration and they're a food truck and they're good standing with the county, they're good to go. Wouldn't that make more sense? One less piece of paper to track?
Well, but the registration is only done once, and that's just to register that they're doing business in Wildemar.
Well, but it renews.
But the other one, no, the registration doesn't, to my knowledge, renew yearly. Once you've registered your business...
You have to pay it to renew every year, correct, Matt?
Business registrations, you need to renew every year.
Yeah, right. So as part of the process, if you're a food truck and you renew and you've got, to me, it's just one less permit you have to have.
But the, the registration for the mobile, mobile food concessions is a lot more detailed than just the business registration. It provides, it requests pictures of the vehicle, that cooperation is going to be connected. It's a little more detailed for handling a permit, sort of like that? Yeah, for that permit. I mean, if you, if we can make a package deal where this is, where we can combine the two, so just one's a no, but the information is of value for that permit, for that mobile food concession.
Easier is better in my mind, but...
Oh, yeah.
So we can combine them to that point and make where your food truck, if you're coming in to get a business registration in your food truck, that'll just be part of the business registration.
The ordinance allows the city to create the form, so the form can be as streamlined as possible.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All look for a motion?
No, I don't need to.
Huh?
It's the, that's administrative process. You have the facts.
I just figured I'd give those suggestions now rather than let them create it and then redo it again.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any opposed? So moved. All right. Gary, that brings us to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Just a few items tonight. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that the city's temporary ordinance, which prohibits all cannabis businesses, will expire on December 12th. This temporary ordinance cannot be extended anymore. And that was brought back beginning of the year. Unless there's objection, staff would like to put together a permanent ordinance prohibiting cannabis businesses to bring back to you after it goes to the planning commission, and that would be in the October timeframe. So if that's acceptable, we'll go ahead and proceed in that manner.
So, yeah, we have to...
We have to do something.
It has to be done, just because we can't do the work again. I just want to have the discussion at some point, as long as we're on the same page with that, to...
Well, there, there isn't enough time between now and December to develop a detailed regulations for cannabis businesses, so we need to establish the permanent ordinance as a placeholder to give us additional time to review this item, these practices.
I guess my ask would be that if we see the county moving forward on their ordinance, once they finalize their ordinance, that that's probably the time where we need to bring that discussion back to the dice here and talk about that. Do we want to copy any part of that or none of it, or go through that process? So I haven't had a chance to check in with the county where they're at with that. I know they've been working on it through the planning commission, but I'm sure it would have made a lot of big news if it went through the county by now, and it hasn't. So when that kind of gets done, I think that's the appropriate time we bring it back here and discuss it here. In the meantime, yeah, we have to go forward, go ahead and put in place the ordinance, because for those of you that don't know, if we don't have an ordinance like this, you continue to get bad operators, and we had one in Sedco Hills that went on way too long, and they just finally shut down last weekend, Gary, was it, or the weekend before?
Yes.
And it's, takes too long, especially if we, if we hadn't had our ordinance in place, it would have taken even longer, or we may not have been able to shut down. So anyway, all right. Any other questions on that?
I would agree.
Just a couple more items before you miss. Franchise subcommittee meeting, looking at having one of those meetings next Tuesday at 4:00. That's on the tentative schedule for that timeframe. We'll be coming up with an agenda on that. Following that meeting, it's a doubleheader that night. Following that meeting in this very room at 6:00 PM, we'll be having a discussion about the homeless situation in the community, along with our sheriff's department, police department will be here, along with the SWAG group that provides social services for the community. So I encourage all the folks that are concerned with the homeless issue, that may have some solutions or some suggestions to come on down and participate in this discussion. So that'll be here next Tuesday, September 25th at 6:00 PM. Matt, I want you to bring to everyone's attention that the commercial design guideline workshop for the community will be held on December 5th here at the city hall, and this will give the community opportunity to review some of the proposed commercial design guidelines. And we'll talk about the different structures all key to some of the other commercial corridors. So this will help provide some uniformity, some standards that these developers have to achieve before they even put up their structures. I just want to bring your attention, as you know, tonight, we are having a demo with the video and the live streaming. I can see it here with live streaming. It's about a 45-second delay from when you do something, it's from when it shows up on the live stream. So the field of view is from, this one camera is from Bridget down to the city attorney. So we will provide links to this, so you can all take a review and review the meeting this evening when you get home. And I want to thank CBC Technical, who is providing the services demo for us. They are a local company here in Wildemar. They were one of the responsible bidders on our RFP, so we'll be taking a look at that, the quality of this, and how it compares with the city's needs over the next week or so. Just want to say thanks to them, and as you know, Jeanette Morales is on vacation, well-earned, and Alfredo Garcia, our backup, is out also. So we do have Tina Rooney here, our backup to the backup. I want to say thank you, Tina, for spending your evening with us tonight and figuring out the technology here. So thank you very much. And that concludes my, thank you.
Very good. With that, we're going to adjourn the council meeting.